All right, I'd like to call the Myhamsburg School Board meeting for Thursday, September 16th, 2021 to order. Let's stand for the pledge to the flag.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Amsler.
Here.
Angel.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Nice.
Here.
Toadvine.
Here.
Dr. Blessing.
Zimmermanly, I'm here. And Homan.
Here.
Okay, next we'll go to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay, first by Angel, a second by Lewis. Roll call, please.
Angel.
Yes.
Toadvine.
Yes.
Amsler.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes. All right, next we have approval of a minute of minutes. The recommended action is to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting held on August 19th, 2021, and the special board meetings held on August 30th, 2021, and September 2nd, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on August 19th, 2021, special board meeting held on August 30th, 2021, and August, oh, I'm sorry, in September 2nd of 2021.
Second.
First by Toadvine, second by Amsler. Any discussion?
No.
All right, roll call.
Toadvine.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Amsler.
Yes.
Angel.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of the financial report dated August 31st, 2021, and the recommended action is to approve that financial report. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the financial report dated August 31st, 2021.
Second motion.
Okay, first by Amsler, second by Toadvine. Mrs. Zimmermanly.
Lewis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I apologize. Everything in the report for this month is routine, startup of school. I was able to, I've been working on creating the same, duplicate what Mrs. or Ms. Hickman was doing. So if you have any questions, I can try them answer for you.
Just thank you for helping us out.
Thank you, it's been an honor.
All right, roll call.
Try this again. Lewis.
Yes.
Amsler.
Yes.
Toadvine.
Yes.
Angel.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes. All right, next we have the recognition of our citizens, staff, and students. And we're going to start first with our May District Student of the Month, and Mr. Amsler will read about Rebecca Kaufman. Do you want to come on up?
Is she here?
Is she here? Okay, come on up.
She says I don't want to.
Hello. Yeah, and Mr. Amsler is going to talk about you. Okay?
Myhamsburg City School District May Student of the Month was Mark Twain Elementary 5th Grader Rebecca Kaufman. She was nominated by her teachers Patty Demont, Joy Dorsten, and the Mark Twain Educational Aid, Mrs. Keneese. They said Rebecca is an exceptional young lady. This school year has provided many challenges for all learners and for some has proven to cause some gaps in learning. In spite of this year's challenges, Rebecca has grown tremendously. Rebecca has made a significant amount of improvements in her reading, writing, and math skills. She consistently turns in quality assignments and asks for help when she needs it, recognizes things that help her to be a better learner, and even takes on the role of teacher to support her peers. Rebecca successfully uses mindfulness strategies that allow her to maintain a positive attitude better for learning. She reminds and encourages her classmates that it is okay to not know, but it is not okay not to try. Rebecca's hard work has helped her make great strides in her own learning. While Mark Twain was learning remotely, Rebecca never missed a classroom Google Meet. She always made great contributions even though the viral classroom experiences were necessary. She turned in every assignment. She was the perfect example of tendency and persuasiveness as we all faced obstacles to obstruction in learning. Not only does Rebecca show maturity and responsibility in her schoolwork, she is always respectful to everyone she meets. She greets all of her teachers in the morning with a sunny, "How are you today?" She always asks adults if they had a good lunch, and she is consistently the first person to offer help to an adult or a peer. Her compassion for others resonates wherever she goes. She is helpful and kind on the playground and in the classroom. She demonstrates the attribute of peacemaker as she strives to always include others in her play. Rebecca's daily smile, positive attitude, and cheery disposition make it clear that she loves school. Rebecca's hard work, perseverance, and kindness deserve to be recognized. Congratulations, Ms. Kaufman.
The Board of Education would like to present you with the Student of the Month medallion. How's the new school going? What's your favorite class? Math? Excellent. Well, congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you do a lot more great things. So you have a great evening. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're very welcome. Congratulations.
Next, we're going to have the Myhamsburg High School Student Government Presentation.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for the high school to be here and just talk about a few things that are happening and highlight some of the great things that are happening at MHS. As you guys know, I just started last Friday sending something out called Fantastic Friday. It's going to be something we do weekly to promote and to highlight something great that's happening at the high school. We believe everybody in the community has some type of connection to our high school, and we just want to highlight some of those great things that are happening. It's also another way for us to kind of communicate and share the culture that we're trying to build at the high school. And when we talk about our culture, we talk about value in people, we talk about value in growth, and we talk about value in teamwork. And I believe those three are super critical in any organization. Tonight, we have two students, two great representatives, that are going to kind of continue that, you know, promoting the high school and talking about some of the great things that are happening. We have Luke Gillespie here. He's one of our student body members. He's the vice president. He's also just recently named as one of the four, from the high school in a way, national merit semifinalist. He's on National Honor Society. He works in our office area, so he eats a lot of our snacks out of the snack drawer. He got a bagel from me today. So he does a lot of great things in our building, but also within the community. So he's a great representative to have here tonight. And then Hannah Eversol, she is the student body treasurer, I'm sorry, secretary. Got that wrong. But she's on like every committee and club known to man. I mean, she helps out in so many different ways. She's on our principal advisory team. So we just met today and talked about some different issues that are happening in the school and how we can solve those. She's on National Honor Society, Interact Club, Hope Squad, she's on that. So just very involved in our school and just two phenomenal leaders. So I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Okay. So first, I'd like to talk about homecoming a little bit. So as you know, last year we were not able to have a homecoming dance. But thankfully, this year we will be able to have a homecoming dance, and we will have it outside, unfortunately. But we're still grateful that we're able to work through the challenges of this year and still have homecoming. And we're also looking forward to having our pep rally, as we normally do on the football field. And also, just looking forward to homecoming in general as the student government does a lot of the planning for that, including the parade and the football game and all of that goes into homecoming, which is just such a fun event for all the students.
Last Friday, we successfully completed our first annual 9/11 memorial stair climb, and it was a huge success. We had over 500 people participate, including staff, students, and members of the community. And we are just very excited to continue this as the years go on. So I wanted to go into, we have, like Mr. Black was saying, a ton of clubs at our schools that are starting to get involved in things, so if you want to start.
I'll just talk about first, we have our, I'm a member of the Sizer Club at the high school, which stands for Students and Science and Engineering Roundtable. And so it's essentially a club that highlights STEM and science and engineering and technology at the high school and also in the other schools. So a couple of the few things that we do at the high school is we do recycling at the high school, which I think is a really big hit amongst the teachers. They really like the recycling. We also do a science carnival for the elementary schools. And we're also looking into doing tutoring at some of the elementary schools to help them with science or math, whatever help they may need. And we also have run a pollinator garden that is outside in front of the high school.
Going into our Hope Squad, we just invited, Hope Squad is a suicide prevention club that we pull members that are representatives in our school that any student can look to if they need help or they just need a friend to talk to. And we just invited a new group of freshmen to join this year and as well as a couple other members from each grade level. So we're super excited to get that up and running. We've had our first meeting this week. And last year, we had events like we had our Hope Week, and we stood with signs inviting people back to the school because it was such a crazy year. We wanted everyone to feel like family and just connected. And we're very excited to do all of that and more this year. So that's very exciting.
And then, just going back to student government, we're also looking forward to doing our annual blood drive at the high school, which always has a good turnout and really helps out the community. And then we also are looking forward to having our holiday project to help support other families that may not be able to give their children Christmas presents. And so that's pretty much what we're looking for at the high school. And we're also possibly looking at doing a 5K in the spring, which we have not done in a while. So that's exciting for us.
So overall, we have a ton of fun and new exciting things happening in the school year, and we're very fortunate that we are still in school and still able to attend every day. So we're making the best out of a crazy time that hopefully will get better soon. So we just want to say thank you so much for listening to us, and we hope this gave a good input on what is going on in the high school.
Thank you, guys.
Some of your clubs, do they meet during the day or after school?
Yeah, a lot of our meetings are during our academic period, which is kind of like a study hall period. Other meetings, like for NHS, we meet after school. But like for Sizer, we meet in academic period. For student government, a lot of times we meet in academic period.
Most do.
Yeah.
Just like I said, I would tip my hat to you if I had one on because you guys, I know you're doing a phenomenal job trying to head a lot of that stuff up out there, especially with all the complications that we've been facing here the last couple of years. So thank you and good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Just thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for thinking of the high school and the community. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you about the Hope Squad because I do follow you on Instagram. Was that student initiated, or how did that all come about?
It was, we, Mr. Black.
I'm sorry, Anne, did you ask about the Hope Squad and how it was initiated? We actually had, it was something that, when I got to the high school about three years ago, I felt like we should have had something already in place. And obviously, there wasn't a peer support there for our students. So there was already some talk and some conversation about it. But we had two students that came to us at about that same time with a real detailed plan on what they would like to do and implement. And we're sitting there looking at it, we're like, this is Hope Squad. So it was really, even though we were kind of talking about it, it was very much student initiated. I think they saw the problem as well, and they were ready to do something about it. So we tried to make it a very student-led group. So they did a phenomenal job with it.
Okay, thank you. Very cool. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a quick announcement, okay?
Sure.
The mayor just texted me and said the restrooms are open or should be soon.
Good. We want to recognize National Custodian Day, and that's on October 2nd, 2021. They work while we sleep. Sometimes, we walk around them in the halls, not always seeing them or their work as important. That's why we celebrate National Custodian Day, which rolls around every October 2nd. It recognizes the hard work that it takes to keep our public facilities in tip-top shape as well as the people who diligently work to make sure we have schools and workplaces that are spotless and sanitary. Custodians are our first line of defense of the war on germs, and often, it's a thankless task. National Custodian Day shows appreciation to the custodians who clean the office buildings and schools. So thank you so much, custodians. We have some great ones in our district, for sure. Then also, we want to recognize Fire Prevention Week. Next month, our buildings will participate in Fire Prevention Week. Since 1922, the NFPA has sponsored the public observance of Fire Prevention Week. In 1925, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance, making it the longest-running public health observance in our country. During Fire Prevention Week, children, adults, and teachers learn how to stay safe in case of a fire. Firefighters provide life-saving public education in an effort to drastically decrease casualties caused by fires. This year's theme is Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. This year, Fire Prevention Week is observed October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, in commemoration of the great Chicago Fire, which began on October 8th, 1871, and caused devastating damage. This horrific conflagration killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 homeless, destroyed more than 17,400 structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres of land. Our district is appreciative and would like to thank the men and women who serve as part of our Miami Valley Fire District and surrounding fire districts. We would also like to thank members of the Miami Valley Fire District, Mr. Bob Pugh and Mr. Chris Amsler, for providing a variety of resources for our students. And this is Mr. Chris Amsler right here, if you didn't know. Yeah, he's one of our board members, so.
Elementary teacher or elementary principals. I will probably be sending something out tomorrow in regards to the month of October. There's no way we're going to be able to get into schools the whole month or the whole week. So anytime during the month of October, we are meeting, Bob Pugh and I are meeting next week with Doug Hatcher. Those of you that know Dennis Hatcher, that was a coach here and up at the high school and stuff, it's his brother that works for Moraine. We're going to go over and set up a strategy of kind of things that he does, and we're going to meet with him next week. So pick your date. Doesn't matter what time in October. Obviously, when we're out for fall break, don't worry about that week at all. But we will be sending something out tomorrow. So you should see something tomorrow. Thanks.
All right, so thanks to the firefighters. Anybody else? All right, well, next.
Thanks, Sharon.
Okay. Next, we will move on to our public participation segment of our meeting. Our board policy allows for a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation. Each speaker is allotted three minutes. State your name and address when called to the podium to speak. If you have a question when you speak, we have your contact, and we'll get back with you tomorrow. After the 30-minute segment, the board will recess for 15 minutes and then return with a board discussion led by Dr. Laura Blessing, our superintendent, and then also our elementary curriculum director, Amy Dobson. Dr. Blessing will provide information on a pilot quarantine program that's in Warren County, and Mrs. Dobson will present our multi-tiered support system. Right, so we will start with Scott Taylor.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today. You know what, see, that the Biden administration said, "If you get the vaccine, or some of us call the jab, all will be fine. We can get back to our normal lives. Just get the vaccine," and everything we find. Oh, and then we find out that the Delta variant shows up. And oh, my gosh, the vaccines don't work. We have to put masks back on. Oh, speaking of those masks that you all smugly wear in this room. Kristin Megan Kelly, she's environmental, environmental technologist. That's the person, when you built this building, you had one of them come in and make some little toxins in there. She says those masks don't work. You rub them on the table, they have no efficiency. Did you know the COVID microbe is 40,000 times smaller than human hair? It's an aerosol. Anyone have some hairspray? I sprayed it here, all of you would know about it. It is a lie, it is a farce, and it is child abuse. And you all have thought into it. You know, my daughter is a junior at this school, and many of these parents are here too. You have forced her not to be able to breathe freely. Now, I kind of get in the beginning because we were stupid to not know it was a lie. And you put her back on her. Do you realize that reducing the oxygen level in someone can cause unknown brain damage? She might be scarred by your all decision to buy into CDC. Oh, speaking of the CDC and Montgomery County Health Department, it would be nice if they'd read their own science. Why do I, as a software engineer, have to learn about medical topics? We trust our leaders to do that, and obviously, they are not doing this right. Let me talk about another person. Dr. Christine Parks' testimony in Michigan. She basically talked about how this virus is designed. It was never designed to stop infection. Did you know that? It was never designed to stop infection, just the symptoms. It does nothing to stop the coronavirus from building in your nostrils. Nothing. It's a lie. They deceived us, and you are continuing it. You should be ashamed of yourself for that. Now, this gentleman here, this is a young athlete, like many Myhamsburg school athletes. He got the COVID because he was told by his board to do it. "Oh, we recommend that everyone get vaccinated." He can't play sports anymore. He got a heart issue, it's called myocardiosis. He put a TikTok video up, you've seen that. I'm sorry, but I'm going to finish. I apologize. Another one.
We need to go.
This one, yes. A television station decided to.
Mr. Taylor, we need to go on.
You can just wait.
We need to go on to Matthew Randolph now.
Okay, I will close now with my final statement to you. This week, I mailed you an affidavit. You sense you will not stand up for my daughter and the other students who attend the Myhamsburg School System. You are complicit in your written guidance where you state in alignment with the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the Home Department of Health and Public.
Yeah, Matthew Randolph needs to come to the podium. Mr. Taylor, your time is over.
I demand.
Your time is over, Mr. Taylor.
The Myhamsburg School District immediately rescind all mask mandates, all instances of defiling whether or not a person is vaccinated with any vaccine.
You are going to make the room be cleared, sir.
Your time is over.
You are going to make the room be cleared, and you're going to take the right of other people to speak.
Thank you for your time.
We're not, we're not.
So.
State your name and your address, please.
Matthew Randolph, 921 Williams Street, Myhamsburg, Ohio. Not far off from that, I understand we had to move to some different measures with the COVID cases rising. I don't think we took the right approach. However, we have an exemption form for those with medical or religious reasons. However, that medical, that exemption form states that the superintendent is allowed to deem any religious belief not sincere. She reserves any right to refuse any religious exemption at all. Ohio Revised Code 3313.601 states that no board of education of a school district shall adopt any policy or rule prohibiting any pupil from the free, individual, involuntary exercise or expression of the pupil's religious beliefs in any primary or secondary school. So for the school board, the people reviewing this, if you do not have a religious degree, what right do you have to deem a religious value not sincere? So on top of that, conspiracy against rights. If two or more persons conspire to injure, oppress, threaten, or intimidate any person in any state in the free exercise or enjoyment of any right, they shall be fined under this title or imprisoned not more than 10 years or both. So I do vote, if we do anything, I say we remove the ability to deny a religious right off of the exemption form. And that is all I'll say.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Andrew Mullins, please.
Not much of a public speaker, but Andrew Mullins, 1827 Belleville Road. All right, I'm going to spit some numbers here first. 606, 566, 576, 720, 719, 753, and 595. Those are the number of under 14 deaths for seven years leading up to 2015 from pneumonia. You know what they have in common? They're all greater than the number of under 17 deaths caused by COVID. That number is 412. Now, there are 73 million children under the age of 17 in the United States. That makes it .000005% chance for any kind of death to be caused to a child. Did you know that 70 to 93% of communication is nonverbal? I'm not an expert, but I believe that a majority of that is learned at early ages through socializing with other children. I don't know how they're doing that with masks on. I got three kids in these schools, and they deserve to see other kids' faces. This is insane. I got some data here I may bring up to you guys. I hope you pass it around. Look at it. Just all I'm asking. I sent everybody here, everybody with an email online. I sent everybody an email. I didn't hear back from one of you. I contain this data in there, but I have it here.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Megan Wolf, please. Alright, Megan Wolf, please.
My name is Megan Wolf, and I'm a Myhamsburg resident. I don't feel comfortable stating my address when I learn that you guys upload these onto YouTube. First off, I want to make it clear that anything I'm about to say is not directed at you as individuals, but as a school board that makes decisions regarding my children. Second off, I want to make it clear I believe in COVID, and I believe people die. What I do not believe in is that you as educators, not doctors, not who I'm co-parenting with, educators, do not have the right to make any health decisions regarding my child. I, and I do believe that is why at the beginning of each school year, us as parents have to fill out a form stating who to contact if there's an emergency with my child, and what steps I want taken with my child in case of an emergency. I have a fifth grader who I pulled from Berg Schools at the start of fourth grade year. He was upset that I did because he didn't want to leave his friends. I, as a parent, had to do what I believed was in his best interest. And because I did that, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna send him to school to be masked for six hours a day. I considered re-enrolling him for his fifth grade year, and which is why I came to your school board meeting in July to ask you about your plans for masks and vaccines. I was specifically told that Berg has no plans on mandating masks unless mandated to do so by the state. The state can't do that anymore for a reason. You shouldn't be able to do it for a reason. Thank God that I prayed about it, and I followed my gut and I chose not to re-enroll him. That I did not base my decision on what I'd been told by you guys. The school he attends now is amazing.
We need to move on.
Are my three minutes up?
No, that was someone else's time.
That was somebody's phone, I'm sorry.
The school he attends now is amazing. No mask mandates, he's not being taught to stay distant from his friends. He's allowed to be a child. He is taught at home, and at the new school, he assumes he has an immune system that he was given for a reason. Children are gonna get sick. That's part of developing their immune system. I am so glad that I was able to make that decision to not re-enroll my child. It's our right to make decisions based on what we believe is in our child's best interest. And mandating your mask for everyone takes that pron right away. It's also doing psychological damage to these children. I'm gonna tell you right now, my fifth grader's here, and you guys were talking, and he goes, Mom, I can't tell who's talking because nobody can see your mouth. Nobody can see your mouth, nobody can tell who's speaking when you're up here speaking. Nobody. I have friends that have told me their kids are coming home upset and in tears because they don't want to get in trouble at school. But they also don't believe in wearing masks. They don't want to miss their school dances, their activities that they take joy in, and they don't want to get in trouble at school. You, as a school board, are putting those children in that position. One quick fact, and then I'll sit down. Four point two million kids have tested positive for COVID. Point zero zero eight percent have died from COVID. The CDC estimates that four hundred and eighty kids died of the flu in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen year. That's more than have died from COVID in a year and a half. Where were you guys with your mask when it was killing more kids from the flu?
Thank you, Megan. And then next we have Nate. I don't have a last name, Nate.
Hello, everybody. My name's Nate, I live in Myhamsburg. And that was my wife that just spoke, and this is honestly, this is disheartening, guys. I'm forty-four years old, and I talked to you two last week. Us three, it was great conversation. And I told you then, and I'm gonna tell you again now, how uncomfortable it is for me at forty-four years old to see you all hiding your faces. It's uncomfortable for me, I'm forty-four years old. I can't imagine my children, I can't imagine them hiding their faces from each other. It's, it's, it's. A world famous doctor, his name's Peter McCullough. You all should look him up. Just recently, he spoke in Michigan. And he, and he said, this is what's going on, it's unbelievable. Doctors are being prevented from treating their patients, personal family doctors. People are having problems getting prescriptions filled at the pharmacies. He said people's eyes are being fogged over. This was his words. People's eyes are being fogged over, and more importantly, their hearts are being hardened. Their hearts are being hardened. And in the blank faces, I'm wondering, is that, is that my, is that my children's school board? Is that, is that who I'm dealing with? I've known you for a long time. I, this is, this is absolutely insane. The PCR tests are an absolute fraud. They're ending, they're ending this year. They're ending this year. I've got so much information that I've written down, but I, it's, this is all public. This is all public knowledge. You all can find this out very simply. There's thousands of doctors that are pleading with the world right now. Thousands of doctors pleading with the world right now. The masks do not work, it's proven, they do not work. There's, there's more than a dozen studies, I believe, up to now, just regarding the COVID. Just regarding the COVID, they do not work. They do not work. I'm sorry, I love you all, I want you all to know, I do, I pray for all of you. I pray for everybody here, I pray for this community. I seriously say that with, with grace, because I, I, I get it. This is, this has been really hard on everybody, I get it. And we've been lied to, we're being lied to. And we need to be able to want to find the truth. We want to, we have to, we have to start looking for the truth. We have to admit to ourselves that we've been lied to. It's, it's a hard pill to swallow. I had to swallow that pill a long, long time ago, way before COVID. And they called me a conspiracy theorist because I realized that nine eleven didn't, didn't happen the way that the official narrative is. You know what else I found out? Is that COVID is not the official narrative that we're being taught, that we're being told by the media, by, by, by Anthony Fauci. Oh my gosh, these people deserve to be probably hung in the gallows. I don't understand why we're taking advice from these people. I, I, I. I seriously, I pray for you all. I pray for you all, and I pray for this community. I hope you guys will do the right thing, please.
Alright, next. Jason Burnett. Is Jason Burnett here still? Is Jason Burnett here? Hi, Jason.
Be nice to see your face. I'm Jason Burnett, I do live in Myhamsburg, I'm not gonna give my address because you don't edit it on YouTube. I'm gonna defer my time to Sarah Hoffmeister, but I would like to say her son, and I'm involved in his life, is a healthy kid. He went to your school without a mask, you sent him home. You're supposed to be teaching these kids. You're teaching them to be scared to be healthy. Are you kidding me? These kids aren't wearing these masks, right? Ma'am, I'm not picking on you, but you've touched your mask like seven times. I'm not picking on you, I'm just saying, I'm just saying. So with that, that's all I really got to say, and I'd like to defer my time.
My name is Sarah Hoffmeister. I actually was coming here to talk to you about a vape video because I got to watch your presentation. I didn't meet one person that had actually watched the video. I will tell you all, it is a really great how-to if you're a smoker and you would like to quit smoking and use vaping. It's a wonderful how-to. It also is a wonderful how-to on vaping marijuana, and actually not just vaping it, but heating it and using it in what they define as a rig, unnecessary information. So all of your information and specs on what is vaping, the details, how to make vape, all the things, they're correct, but your science is wrong. Your science isn't backed by data, it's not supported by facts. The Royal Board of Physicians says that vaping is ninety-five percent safer than smoking. We don't want kids to vape, but we don't want to lie to them either. You're calling nicotine a brain poison. We had to answer the question that, we know nicotine is addictive because it has withdrawal symptoms. That is not scientifically true. It is considered dependent forming, right, just like caffeine, not addictive. That is a different scientific definition, and I encourage you to look it up. The video is atrocious, right? Now I'm here to talk about masks, and so that's really why he deferred his time, so I could at least address the vaping stuff. It needs to be dealt with. That video is terrible. It's terrible. In terms of math. So I went to your schools, right, and we were taught to cough in your elbow, right? My son, the whole time in your schools, cough in your elbow. And now, then you taught him, hey, cough in your elbow, and now we're gonna elbow bump each other. So, again, not based on science. The other thing is your masks don't work if you don't have supporting controls in place, okay? If you don't have the air filtration system in place in the building, the masks are more dangerous than they are helpful, right? Also, we have this thing, children have this thing called an innate immune system, right, where it can detect anything, it can fight anything. The reason that elderly population is so susceptible is because that innate immune system is gone. Gonzo, it doesn't exist anymore, okay? You are left with only what you have developed immunity to when, through what you've been exposed to in your life. Well, guess what? The vaccine is leaking. What we call that is it's a poor neutralizing vaccine, right? That means that the variant can get stronger and stronger and stronger. So, that's what's happening, okay? Our kids, though, they have a really great immune system, they can develop immunity to it, and half of them, at least half of them, already have immunity, which we're completely ignoring and stuffing them in a mask, okay? RSV is rampant. It is, what, double, triple? I think they said it was triple what it was three years ago when it was. Thank you. Triple what it was three years ago when it was incredibly deadly. It is way more dangerous to children than COVID-nineteen, okay? But we need to expose our children to bacteria and viruses to build their immune system, right? There are immune system priming illnesses, right? Measles, those are actually considered immune system priming illnesses. That is why they are not deadly for children, but they can be for adults, right? It also helps reduce your risk of cancer later in life. Chicken pox, chicken pox, you get that, reduces your risk of brain cancer by sixteen percent, okay? There's a reason that we have an immune system, we have to let our children use it, and you're lying to them. My other biggest issue here is that I've spoken to countless people, and I've been told that, oh, this policy comes from up here, it comes from over here, it comes from the Health Department. Well, the Health Department told me that they don't have the authority to issue any mandates or enforce it. I talked to city council, and they didn't have anything to do with either. So I still, my question for you still, Laura Blessing, is who is instituting these policies? What are your policies? Where are they written? What are the consequences? Where is it? I have not gotten any answers, but bold-faced lies from school staff and administrator, absolutely despicable. Despicable. Our children need to be in school to learn. My kid got sent home. He pleaded, I'll sit in the back corner of the classroom. He has mild asthma and fainted twice last year in that mask. We're willing to compromise with you with your ridiculous nonsensical policies, but you're not. And who gave you the right to disregard religious exemptions? Now, since I've had the time to talk to his doctor that you guys like to send me to, since I've had the time, they don't want to sign forms because you have to approve it. And boards are submitting doctors to the medical board for signing waivers, valid or not. The government, Mississippi, they're doctors, they're not allowed to say anything against the narrative or they'll be brought up on charges. So your scientists, doctors are being silenced. I encourage you to do your own research like we are. And then try to put together a policy before you implement it, because you sent my son home, and I didn't have the form in time to get it filled out. So he missed today's school because you were unprepared. Not because he was unprepared, because you were unprepared. No one planned for it. There we go. So I recommend that we probably clarify these policies.
Can we go on to Garrett Hoffmeister, please?
And I'm entirely incredibly offended at the disrespect that the administrators, staff, and board give to parents who are forcing their rights and opinions on behalf of their kids. Expect better of you.
Hello, my name is Garrett Hoffmeister, and I won't be giving my address. I don't know much about the science, I'm not gonna lie, but I do know because I'm at these schools. And I was sent home for not, for trying to have an opinion of what I put on my own body. How is that right? How are you guys gonna tell me that I have to wear a mask when I haven't been sick once? I haven't been diseased once with this virus. But I'm being sent home for. For healthy, I'm being healthy. I'm doing the right thing and standing up, but the schools enforce it not because we're scared of the virus, because you're making us scared of you and what you guys will do to us. I should have a right to an education. I shouldn't be demonized for having an opinion. It's not right, and it's disgusting that you're okay with it. I just can't believe my eyes that we're supposed to have this free country, but yet you guys are forcing us to do things that we all have opinions about. If you want to wear a mask, that's fine, but the people that don't shouldn't be forced. It's not right. I think everyone, almost everyone here would agree with me on that, is that right? Yep? It's difficult going to school, and when you see the people you care about, you can't even see their own smile. You can't see them laugh or have a good time, because you even take it down for a second, what do you got? Teachers on you about wearing it and just ruining your day. I've had people follow me in the hallways when there's no one around because I don't have it on. Last year, they told me that we could go out into the hallway for a break if we can't breathe with our mask. I go out in the hallway now, I have your teachers aides following me from one half of the school to the other. How is that right? They follow me in the bathrooms if I have to use the restroom. They follow me from class to class. Wherever I go, it's like a frickin' prison, and I am never free there. If you have your own fears about Corona, you can go ahead and live with your BS, I really don't care. But for the people that want to have a voice and opinion of what they wear, you have no right to control that. We should be able to be humans and live. But you're controlling what we do constantly, and it's disgusting to watch. Yeah. We wear it by force, not by fear, and that's awful that you force children to wear a mask.
Sir, you do not have the floor.
Let's go to Stacy Anderson.
Oh, he can take some of my time if I want, I really don't care.
Alright, can we have Stacy Anderson come up, please? Stacy here, okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Stacy Anderson, you have my address if you need it. Early on in this pandemic, our governor, our health department told us that only essential businesses could stay open. We needed to stay home and stay away from our family and friends. It seemed very arbitrary, though, when we found out who was essential and who wasn't. Our students and their education clearly is not essential to the people who are giving you guidance. We were advised by the governor, the ODH, the ODE. Only safe way to open schools is to require everyone to wear a mask and other precautions. But all the while, evidence is accumulating that children are not super-spreaders of this disease. It's rare for children to experience severe complications. Those who advise us are arbitrary in picking the science that they rely on for their decision-making. Schools continue to shut down, bring back remote learning, bring back masking, and it does not work for the majority of our students, and it's a disaster for my, for my children. Our governor, our ODH, our ODD, ODE told us we can only be in school safely if we're wearing masks all day. They say to follow the science, but they ignore so many studies that don't support their guidance. A recent study by the CDC has found there's no statistical difference in COVID transmission between schools who mandated masks and those with mask optional policies. You can easily find on CDC's own website hundreds of studies that show, among other things, that masks don't stop the SARS-CoV-2 virus. Mask wearing in both adults and children is not harmless and not without adverse effects. The majority of students are not at risk for death or severe disability. Students are not spreading this virus to their teachers, they're not contracting it at school, and they're not taking it home to kill their families. I'd be happy to provide you these links if you'd like them. ODE and ODH are not gonna send you those links. What they will provide is guidance based on incomplete facts. They'll tell you you have to wear a mask to protect yourself and others, and I think we can all see in the past year and a half, that's not working, it's not stopping this virus. They'll tell you kids are resilient and adaptable despite the growing statistics of increases in anxiety, depression, suicide attempts. They will tell you to quarantine healthy people. And where's the statistics that show? And where's the statistics that show how many of these people who are quarantined, are they getting sick? If your policy is resulting in healthy people being forced to stay out of school, it's putting an enormous strain on you, dealing with shortage of staff, bus drivers. They give you a quarantine policy that punishes the unmasked and unvaccinated. And this especially is not backed by science, it's readily available, that you can find. We know the COVID vaccine doesn't stop someone from getting the virus, it doesn't stop them from spreading the virus. How does it make sense the quarantine policy is different for vaxxed versus unvaxxed? Both populations spread the virus. You can't count on the governor and the ODE and the ODH to be transparent in their decision-making or with the results of their failed policies and their failed guidance. You do not have to comply with their arbitrary quarantine policies. You do not have to comply with their masking guidance. And I don't care what our governor says. Our students' education is essential. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brendan, I'm extremely known utility in downtown Miami'sburg. I'm here on behalf of myself and students. I don't have any children in this district, but I pay taxes for the city of Miami'sburg. I have been to the FEMA camp, I'm certified in hazmat and bio and, and C-Burn. Uh, the only thing that's gonna protect you from a bioweapon is not that shit on your face. It's this right here, it's about a thousand bucks. This is a brand-new issued one for the military, been in for nine years. That, I promise you, that's not gonna protect you, I absolutely promise you. A full mop suit with this on your face will protect you. That's all right. I just want, oh, and also the religious exemption, um, I would love to know Dr. Blessing's religious background.
Our thirty minutes is up.
Exactly. I would love to know if she even believes in a God.
Our thirty minutes is up, and we're gonna take a fifteen-minute recess. All right, our next item is the approval, adoption, revision of a board policy. It is recommended that the Board of Education waive the first reading of the following board policy. Use of face coverings. Do I have a motion?
Angel.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Who's second is? Who's second is it? Okay, first by Angel, second by Amsler. All right, roll call. Angel? Angel?
Yes.
Amsler?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. Next, we'll go to the approval, adoption, revision of board policy. It is recommended that the Board of Education waive the first, the first reading of the following board policy. Approved, okay. All right. All right, okay, we need to ask, yes, you need to remove him, please. You... No. No. Okay, um, all right, do I have a motion? 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 Guys, you have a motion?
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Hey, we, we can't answer at all, because you won't get a minute to talk.
Okay, do I have a second?
You're gonna, you're gonna hear it right now.
Okay, roll call. Angel?
Yes.
Amsler?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Toadvine? Toadvine?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. All right, now we need to approve consent as agenda A through C. Do I have a motion? A through, wait a minute. A through C, do I have a motion, please?
Sharon, that's you.
I move, we approve the consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
Which, okay, first by Angel, second by Lewis. Any questions or discussion? All right, roll call. Amsler?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. Lewis?
Yes.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
All right, next we'll go to the human resources agenda items. Approval of personnel reports, certificated and classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Miami'sburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII, an FBI criminal record check, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Motion, please.
I move, we approve personnel reports, certificated and classified.
Second.
First by Angel, second by Lewis. Uh, roll call, please. Neese? Yes. Lewis?
Yes.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Amsler?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
All right, next we have approval of personnel reports, certificated, classified, supplemental stipends. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report. Employment in the Miami'sburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII, an FBI criminal record check, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted board policies. Motion, please.
I move for the approval of the personnel report.
Second.
First by Toadvine, second by Lewis. Roll call, please. Angel?
Yes.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. Amsler?
Epstein.
All right, next we move on to agreements and contracts. The approval of the Miami'sburg Classroom Teachers Association, which is the MCTA negotiated agreement extension. It is recommended by the superintendent to approve this negotiated agreement extension with the MCTA for an additional two years effective July first, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Motion, please.
I move, we...
I'll move for the approval of the Miami'sburg Classroom Teachers Association negotiated agreement extension.
I'll second.
All right, first by Lewis and second by Angel. Roll call, please. Toadvine?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. Lewis?
Yes.
Amsler?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
All right, next we have the approval of the agreement with Key Behavior Services, LLC. It is recommended by the superintendent to enter into an agreement with Key Behavior Services, LLC, for consul- consultation services by a behavior analyst, certified by the Behavior Analyst Certification Board, effective August first, two thousand twenty-one, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. A motion, please, a motion, please?
I move for the approval of agreement with Key Behavioral Services, LLC.
Second.
First by Amsler, second by Toadvine. Any discussion? All right, roll call. Lewis?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. Angel?
Yes.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Amsler?
Yes.
All right, next we move on to approval of authorizing the purchase of school buses. It is recommended by the superintendent and the director of business that the bus body chassis bid conducted, conducted by the Miami'sburg City School's specifications be awarded to Rush Truck Center. The award is for three forty-eight slash fifty-four special needs school buses. Total award amount is two hundred and seventy-six thousand, sixty dollars. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of authorizing the purchase of school buses for special needs.
Second.
All right, first by Toadvine, second by Amsler. Any discussion about the purchase of the buses?
Steve, are we getting help from the state for this?
Yes, we are using the Esther Three Fund money for that, and then we're also using, uh, the bidding through the EPC process. And we're actually getting in under-the-line, uh, item, because the next round of buses we get, the price is going up about six thousand dollars. We learned that at a meeting this week because of supply and demand.
Thank you.
All right, roll call. Neese? Yes. Lewis?
Yes.
Amsler?
Yes.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
All right, next we have the approval of the agreement with Capital Aluminum and Glass Corporation. It is recommended by the superintendent and assistant superintendent, director of business, to approve an agreement with Capital Aluminum and Glass Corporation. Motion, please.
I move, we approve the agreement with Capital Aluminum and Glass Corporation.
Second.
All right, first by Angel, second by Toadvine. Any discussion?
So, that bid went ahead and brought it to the board, even though it's under the, the threshold. As you know, we've been working through the issues with, uh, the memorial building, with the settling of the ground and everything going on there. And so, this company's been working with us and, um, is willing to work us on a price to get the new, um, doors for the front of the building and, and re-concrete the bottom. So, the doors actually close and lock, and they're not sticking and all those things, so...
Okay, thanks, Mr. Homan. Roll call, please. Amsler?
Yes.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. Lewis?
Yes.
All right, next we have the approval of the agreement with BSN Sports. The superintendent recommends approval of an agreement with BSN, BSN Sports for the purchase of pole vault and high jump pits. Do you want to talk about that, Mr. Homan?
Yeah, so we've been looking over the last several years, we've had those, the, uh, the pits out there for the, the track and field for a number, number of years. And, uh, we've band-aided it, patched it, kind of got through it, but, um, we're actually gonna partner with the track and field boosters. Um, they're gonna donate some money as well for that, so we've been kind of saving a way to replace that, so... I know our athletes will be very appreciative of it and, uh, and the workers too, that, uh, work the meat, so...
Any questions? All right, roll call. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I move for the approval of the agreement with, uh, BSN Sports, second.
I did that backwards, okay. All right, uh, first by Toadvine, second by Lewis. Roll call, please. Lewis?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. Amsler?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to our financial agenda items. First, we have authorization for amendments to the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. Do I have a motion?
I move for the, uh, authorization for amendment to the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources.
I'll second.
All right, first by Amsler. And second by Angel. Uh, any discussion? Uh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, just routinely reports, um, just, this, uh, takes care of the minor changes in budget revenues, um, and it'll be filed with your, uh, court, uh, tomorrow, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please. Toadvine?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. Lewis?
Yes.
Amsler?
Yes.
Next, we have the acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero-one-eight account unless indicated otherwise. Office supplies from Dour Print, Dour Printing to the Miami'sburg School District. Back-to-school supplies valued at five thousand dollars from Miami'sburg Assembly of God Church to Mark Twain Elementary School students. Five thousand dollars from the Viking Booster Association, the track and field boosters, to the Miami'sburg Athletic Department towards the purchase of pole vault and high jump pits. Do I have a motion?
I move, we approve the donations.
Second.
All right. Thank you so much for all the donations, so helpful. Uh, roll call, please. Amsler?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
Toadvine?
Yes.
Neese? Yes. All right, next we have reports, and our first report is from our MVCTC, Board President Joe Isakovich.
Good evening. Want to, uh, recognize some of our students from Miami'sburg. Uh, first off, the Ohio Business Professionals of America Chapter at MVCTC is very fortunate in that Lacey Baker from Miami'sburg was elected a state officer. It's quite an honor, uh, uh, for her and, and for Miami'sburg, uh, to boot.
Joe, make sure you, uh, relate to her that the board is very appreciative of everything that she has and is doing.
I will be happy to. Also, our Skills USA Chapter Officers, Joseph Lisk Lipscomb from Miami'sburg. He's in aviation maintenance. Uh, he was also elected an officer. Uh, one of our important, uh, functions at MVCTC is the election of student ambassadors, and as we, uh, cover twenty-seven partner schools that come under our umbrella, uh, the student ambassadors are very important to us because they travel around to the various schools and, uh, discuss the benefits of MVCTC. And from Miami'sburg, uh, we're fortunate to have three student ambassadors that are traveling around for us. Uh, the first is Blake Halsall. He is in robotics and automation. Anthony Jones, he is in graphic commercial art. And Logan Thompson, graphic commercial photography. And, uh, we're very pleased to have them representing Miami'sburg. Also, uh, John Lee has done very well in the, uh, computer end of it, and, uh, he did receive a five-hundred-dollar scholarship from Ta- Technology First. And this scholarship is awarded to an outstanding high school student, and he is a member of MVCTC and Miami'sburg Class of two thousand twenty-one. He's done very well and, uh, has become quite well-known in the computer end of it. Also, construction update, uh, students and staff. Uh, if any of you have been able to go out and look at our campus and the construction going on, uh, they've started transitioning into the temporary spaces as the school year is now underway. Uh, the temporary instructional spaces were created, some of their own challenges in regards to noise levels and logistics, especially as we're doing demolition. Uh, we continue to reevaluate our options, but additional learning space is extremely limited during this phase of the project. This includes several new routes to allow students to access the completed north and south wings. Uh, also, the east building demolition is, uh, continuing and should be complete yet this month. And they will, uh, continue with the construction of what we call the main spine of the, the building. Once this is complete in 2023, we'll have, uh, over six hundred thousand square feet under one roof. Uh, also, uh, October 7th, we are having the All Advisory Dinner and Hall of Fame Inductions for CTC. And I will be attending that. And, uh, on October 9th, which is a Saturday, the Future Farmers of America are having their reunion at CTC. And I will be, uh, attending that also. So that is pretty much what's going on at CTC. Any questions or comments? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. All right, next we have the Legislative Asian, or, um, and that's Sharon Angel.
And the legislature has just come back into session this week, so I'll have something unsure next month.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. All right, next we have our Student Achievement Liaison, Christopher Amsler. I think you, I don't think there are any this time, right? Okay. All right, just the one. Yeah, all right, so we'll go on to Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition Liaison, Tim Lewis.
Nothing this month.
Okay. All right, next we go on to the District News and Information, which Mr. Amsler will do, please.
Officials of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation recently announced the names of approximately sixteen thousand semifinalists in the National Merit, Merit Scholarship Program. These academically talented high school seniors have the opportunity to continue in the competition for some eight thousand seven hundred National Merit Scholarships, worth more than forty million dollars that will be offered next spring. To be considered a Merit Scholarship Award semifinalist, you must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finals. Uh, about fifteen thousand semifinalists are expected to be notified in either February that they have advanced to the final round. From which two thousand five hundred winners of twenty-five hundred National Merit Scholarships will be chosen. Congratulations to our four finalists. Alex Knapp, Aaron Gillespie, uh, Critic Tella, and Luke Gillespie. So those are our four that was chosen, and, um, that's quite an honor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Amsler. All right, next we're going to go to Adjourn our Meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We, I second it. Okay. Okay, first by Angel, second by Nice. All right, roll call. Angel? Angel? We said we'd answer them tomorrow. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Toadvine? Toadvine? Nice? Yes. Lewis?
Yes.
Amsler?
Yes.